You're on, Jerry.
Okay, here we go, guys. City of Taft Planning Commission Special Meeting Agenda Wednesday, May 7th, 2025, City Hall Council Chambers at 209 East Kern Street, Taft, California 93268. The City of Planning Commission meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are livestreamed at https://www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaft. Public comment can be made in person and can also be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the cityclerk@cityofclerk@cityoftaft.org, made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments not made in person will be accepted up until one hour before the meeting. Any comments received will be read into the record. Okay, we're going to have our pledge of allegiance. I'll go ahead and lead that, and then we'll have our invocation with Pastor Bella Black. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor?
Bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you for this planning commission. Lord, bless them as they faithfully come together to fulfill your purpose for the city of Taft. Holy Spirit, give them your wisdom and guidance as they seek to do your will. I speak your peace, your patience, and your blessings over their families. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen, and thank you. Okay, we're on to roll call.
Chairman Livingston?
Here.
Vice Chairman Schertz?
Here.
Commissioner Dowden?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
And Commissioner Orin is absent with notice.
Okay, citizens request for public comment?
Oh, we're clear.
Uh, yep. So there are no further comments, so we will now be moving on to the minutes of the April 16th meeting. Again, it was a special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please have roll call?
Commissioner Dowden?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Schertz?
Yes.
Chairman Livingston?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, on to number three. Item three is a study session for the City of Staff's Housing Element Update for 2023-2031. Recommendation is the Plan Director will present a progress report on the public outreach and workshops held for the housing element. This is an information item only. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Livingston. The update today is more so because we've gone through two reviews with housing and community development at state level. And we've received the second comments, and we're technically out for the third review as we speak. The third review was both submitted to, or yeah, submitted to HCD and then transmitted to Faith in the Valley, which was our lone commenter on the first draft. So all subsequent drafts, we transmit to them through this process. But hopefully, we're close enough to reaching where it could be certified that we'll see if it's somewhat of a both formal yet informal process where it doesn't require the full 60-day time periods for subsequent reviews as the law allows with HCD. We're, I think we're close to the finish line where it may be a couple of weeks, you know, back and forth type of reviews as opposed to the two months. But I will go into where we're at and update the overall progress right now. And you should have a copy of the PowerPoint to follow along.
Thank you.
But just to go over what I generally mentioned, the draft housing element was completed in June of 2024. Then a public review was made available from June 12th to July 12th, which is also an informal review with HCD. HCD provided their comments on August 19th, 2024. And based on those, we were able to complete the first formal submittal of the draft and submitted to HCD for their 90-day review, which was between September 5th and December 5th, 2024. Thankfully, they were quicker with their review in that we received their comments in November 27th. And then had a Zoom call with them to go over those comments on December 17th of 2024. Right before that Zoom call, we were able to have our third housing element workshop on December 12th to go over those comments and what direction we were going to go with those and also take any additional feedback. We took all that information and feedback and put it into the second public review, which requires, as I mentioned, this one only was transmitted, made publicly available and transmitted to Faith in the Valley, our lone commenter on the first review. And it was a seven day, but we gave a little more than seven days between February 12th and 21st. That should say 2025, I apologize. And then the second formal submittal to HCD for their 60-day review was from March 14th to May 14th of 2025. And again, HCD was able to get us their comments early on April 29th, which was last Monday. And then we have submitted the third review of the draft for public review from May 1st to 8th. That was submitted both to HCD and to Faith in the Valley for their review. I'm not sure of the timeline. As I mentioned, it should be significantly shorter than 60 days, and we'll see what kind of return on it. Because we received about maybe two dozen comments with like a half of them needed to be addressed. So we have roughly a dozen or so that we addressed in this draft that's out for public review. And all of this is on the city website under Planning and Development. Look for the Housing Element tab. Every draft of these three drafts is there under that Housing Element tab, along with all the flyers and public noticing that we've done over this process. So the draft Housing Element sections here, I only have the one highlighted red, which is the Goals, Policies, Objectives, and Programs, because that's the most significant number of changes that have happened since. But I'll briefly go over some sections that had changes. But most of the ones that aren't part of Section 9 either fed into Section 9 for updating the programs or we added a couple more, or it was all about greater public outreach, either what we did with the third one in December or the ongoing outreach, which is a newer program from maybe the last time I presented all of this to you sometime last year. So the first three sections, the Housing Element is Introduction, Rejoin Housing Needs Allocation, and the Review and Revision of Previous Element. The only section that has a significant change is Section 3 regarding the effectiveness of the fifth cycle Housing Element progress. It's a minor revision there, but I've just highlighted it in red for full disclosure. So when folks could probably follow along if they have the PDF draft open as I'm discussing this, that they want to review it later, so. The Community Outreach and Engagement, we added a summary of the public review drafts of Number 1 and Number 2 and the comments received. And then also included the third workshop that happened in December. Five for the Housing, Section 5 for the Housing Needs Assessment, there were no significant changes there, or at least Sections 5.1 through 5.4. But on to Sections 5.5 and 5.6, we've updated or added more information per the request of HCD regarding the existing housing conditions in Taft. And then we've already discussed a little bit on the farmworkers' housing. There's just a provision in the law where if you have agricultural land zoned in your town, you have to have what they lay out for farmworker housing in that zone. But actually, I think the way we presented it, which it is in the law as well, it's any kind of employee housing. It doesn't have to be farmworker, but particularly farmworker and ag zone land needs to allow it. But that's where we have it for now, particularly with the farmlands are immediately adjacent, if you will, but they're close enough where should someone want to utilize. The lone agricultural piece of land is the last bit of property on the east end of Gardner Field Road before it goes into, crosses the aqueduct into the county. And then moving on to Section 6, under the Sites Inventory, there's a number of changes here. The Sites Inventory, we've been adjusting as they have a separate reviewer that looks at it. We put together a lengthy spreadsheet of all the properties that are identified as the sites, and there's little adjustments that they needed. And then we made changes to, in additions of recent development trends, likelihood of non-residential development, realistic development potential of non-vacant sites and government properties. These are some key things that every single city has had to address. And I think I'm going to cover a little bit later, but the part about the likelihood of non-residential development. The downtown Taft-specific plan has a lot of the mixed-use zones. There is the potential, because it does allow commercial uses, somebody will build something that has no residential whatsoever, you know, an expansion of the grocery outlet and Dollar General uses, if you will. So basically, what we did there was we discussed that in the text portion. And then in the, with the Sites Inventory, the percentage number we used of the maximum allowable density, so, you know, 10 per acre on a 10-acre site, you get 100 units. We mirrored both Shafto and Wasco, that both went 70%. So if we had a site like that, we'd calculate the number at 70, yeah.
That's easy.
So that's what we did there, and to be consistent with what's going on in the county and all that. And then again, with the government properties, there's a Surplus Land Act where they're trying to get as many jurisdictions to discharge as much of their property as possible to help with housing in their areas. Continuing on to the Section 6, there's no changes to 6.4, 5, or 6. So and then the initial analysis of constraints is 7.1. Government constraints, which is basically the analysis of what your application processes are, site plan review, general plan amendments, zoning changes, things like that. They were good with our initial draft for majority of it. But extending into 7.1, there was the processing and permitting procedures timeline. We made a few edits there. Basically, they're trying to get all jurisdictions to outline how we would more assuredly the process procedure in getting to a decision body to make it more assured for potential developers, basically, what the process is, yeah. So that's only revision there. On to Section 8 regarding affirmatively fair, furthering fair housing. We've actually done pretty good here with this being the new section, if you will, that every city's had to address in the housing element, so no changes to 8.1, 2, or 3. But on to 8.4, a new program, which we'll get into in Section 9. But based on the properties that we identified on the Sites Inventory, one, they want us to make sure that any kind of effort and work towards getting more housing is done equitably throughout the city. But particularly because Central Taft has some of the AFFH metrics that tend to put up a red flag that something needs to be done. But I think it tends to be, Central is because of the, it is a lower-income area, but it does also capture Heritage Park, which is a lot of seniors living on Social Security, probably because their rents are extremely low. But it also, we included West Taft, which with all the housing left to complete for Sandy Creek. They also wanted that addressed because it's, housing element's supposed to address everything from low income to moderate to above moderate. So any effort for urban design, things like the trail that is out there, should be done everywhere else as well. You know, ensuring there's bike trails, adequate sidewalks, landscaping, good urban design, those type of things is what they were pushing for there. And we'll get into that a little bit into Section 9, where there was no changes to the four goals, which were, three of them were somewhat carryovers with slight edits from the prior housing element. And then Goal 4 was the addition, and there's no changes there. But getting into some of the housing goals and policies on the programs, started with nine programs, and then there's kind of subprograms beyond that. We've added a 10th, as I mentioned, we'll get to that one. But in Section 1 here, we have the Acquisition and Development of City-Owned Property, as I mentioned before, government-owned property, the state's really pushing for all government agencies of every kind, even special districts and others. So school districts, they're trying to get them to discharge as well. So we addressed that. And then it also, because we broke up some of the Adequate Sites list to include what we're calling large lot properties, so a lot of the lands on the east side of 119, and then the remainder of Sandy Creek Estates is large. We, it's basically addressing every form of housing or properties that we found. Our role as this local government for acquisition and/or helping the developer develop that property. So city-owned property, federally-owned property, large lots, because they're also, most of the large lot properties exceed what might be considered a size that would attract a developer. Some properties are too small, some are too big. So if it's like 100 acres plus, a lot of developers don't like touching that. They want somebody else to chop it up into like 10 to 40-acre pieces, because that could be in like an 80 to 200 lot range of development. So that's why the large lot ones were included. And then non-vacant sites, that one's, I think the majority of our non-vacant sites is Central Taft particularly, but a lot of the infill properties, somehow either a front residential unit burned down and the rear one is the only thing that's
Still standing.
Still standing, or vice versa, you know, front without the rear type of thing. So there's a lot of single unit, maybe potentially two units of development on these infill lots, if they add an ADU type of thing, that's more of these non-vacant sites. So it's not, you know, trying to put housing on the Albertson's Shopping Center type of situations purely. We have a number of individual lots that have a residential structure of some sort that are addressed in the Adequate Sites list, so. We will move on. There are no changes to Program 2, A through D. And then Program 3 and 4 are, the HCD was good with how we drafted those. And then now getting into Program 5, which is the good chunk of, or there's just a longer list of programs. And you may recognize a number of these as we've addressed. Pretty much all the ones that are in black on the list are ones we've probably reviewed a draft. Zoning Ordinance Amendment, the red ones are the new ones. Well, 5O was water and sewer priority, but we've put reasonable accommodation in there. Again, that's addressing handicap persons' needs in the housing per the law. So that's in there. Water and sewer priority just got moved down to 5P. And then Objective Findings were added in 5Q. And then 5R is Public Participation, which I may have mentioned back in December or January. But what we're going to do is, you'll see a lot of these changes in a number of those programs and even on Program 1s, where Faith in the Valley requested a housing committee be formed. But a committee doesn't intend to restrict people out, but if you see a committee, it's five or seven members. They get selected. There is a public process in a sense. But the way that the three workshops, I think, worked out well for this process, I think continuing that where there's no formal member, there's not a, a city council member could show up as long as we don't have a quorum. Commissioner could show up as long as we don't have a quorum. But we want to hear from everybody. And sometimes our process here and even committee processes can unintentionally not get good attendance, people speaking one way or the other about whatever the issues may be. So Program 5R, it's a biannual public meeting regarding housing. And what I'm hoping to do is to bring a lot of the folks we weren't quite able to get into the stakeholder interviews, you know, get the director from the Mission of Kern County to just discuss with people and answer their questions on their successes and struggles in dealing with all homelessness in Kern County. Because they do come out here, I'll keep talking to her and I'll try to talk over.
I forgot.
One or five dollars in the can, whatever.
It's five dollars. Yeah, right.
But the Mission, everybody knows about the Mission. They do very well, but they're always full. When they get a bed vacancy, it fills right back up with somebody local, maybe somebody from Taft. But to have him speak about homelessness as a whole, maybe even have somebody from PD that can talk about it locally. And then if I can get some of these home builders or maybe even the Home Builder Association president, folks like that, I would have a guest speaker and then an open forum of what are we seeing? I'd give an update on permanent issuance progress of new residences. Because we are doing one to four, max five, without Sandy Creek Estates building. It's really like very single-digit development. We're getting a few ADUs applied for and built, so that's a good thing. It's kind of becoming a thing locally. But we're going to have like five or less a year unless somebody starts building Sandy Creek Estates again. But I'll be giving housing updates twice a year. I'll probably time it either before, right before or right after doing the annual progress report for the housing element. Because I'll be assembling the data information on it so I could report out, you know, April or May after getting that to the state by April 1st. So that's, the biggest thing is the outreach part and doing more engagement with the public and producing reports and putting on the city website. So the Housing Element site will probably, once we're certified, will probably convert to more of information update. I'll put all the annual progress reports here so folks can access it. I'm going to go through Planning Commissioner, City Council agendas, things like that. So that's the big one is 5R, and it kind of spreads everything out to other programs regarding public or outreach and making sure the information of all things housing in Taft is out there for folks to access.
Out of curiosity, what did they expect the Housing Committee to do?
Well, like most folks with any kind of public process, most everybody's hoping to get the solution or answer right there in that, that meeting or somehow it would be worked out in that forum, if you will. It's work behind the scenes, and it's really on getting developers here. That's the biggest thing. No city's built really a single stack of housing in probably 40, 50 years when they were what people might quote-unquote call the projects, if you will. It's been funding ever since. It's been supportive funding through the redevelopment agencies, pairing up for particular grants or co-signing on probably whatever would be the, what do you call it, the tax breaks or whatever that process is. I've only processed one in my career, and they don't produce a lot of housing development in the state as a whole. But anyways, that's where I think, because we're trying to have more interaction with the public, people of Taft, others that may be concerned with Taft or the residents here, whether they're in the city limits or in the county, we're kind of somewhat all 93268. But to have that kind of forum, I think, would be more effective to get input from the public than more formal forum like our public meetings here
Right.
or a committee meeting.
I'm actually, the reason I was asking is it's been my experience that committees tend to close off, comment.
Right.
Make it harder for people, or they think, oh, well, the committee's going to take care of it.
Well, it's an action group. It's council members, commissioners, and three members of the public that have some kind of stake in the game, hopefully, or are active enough to have input on economic development. Or when we did the logo updates and things like that.
Yeah.
Where that, that's, but this, with the housing, because it could reach so many different people, you want to open the doors more. Plenty of room at the transit center, it's out of City Hall, it invites more people to show up.
I'd rather we work on recruiting as broad a group of people as possible, which is what you've done with the presentations.
And Faith in the Valley provides some of the connection to a lot of the non-English-speaking community that's here. So they provide that link by having that venue, that forum, if you will. And it seems to work well. It's a good idea with HCD, they didn't comment too much on this, other than making sure whatever outreach or efforts don't hyper-focus on one location or the other, whether it's a low-income area or an area that's presumably going to be above moderate. So it's more of, you know, take everything into consideration and any efforts made should be somewhat equally to each corner of the city.
Especially since the city is not going out of its way to decrease the amount of housing. I mean, we're, we want housing, and it's, it's not like working in some other jurisdictions where a position to housing is high. Here, the question is, can we get more and how do we get it? And I think that having a broader group is better.
And then to round out, nine, there we go. Into Programs 8 and 9, under Section 9.2, we have some minor edits, and it's similar to what I've been saying before, but regarding the multifamily housing project in 9A, 9C for the self-help housing, 9D for senior housing project, 9G for development disabilities, and then 9O, farmworker housing is either related to the co-changes in Program 5 or it's more regular reporting of what's happening in those areas or the public outreach. So it's pretty consistent there. And then the newest programs, Program 10, Central West Taft Neighborhood Revitalization. It's combining a number of, I think I have it in what I provided you here. I'll try to read it as quick as I can. It's right at the end of the Chapter 9 that was in your staff report, where for both Central and West Taft, and actually, we'll call it Southern, there's some properties along Highway 33 that are eligible. But we're emphasizing that for these geographic areas that we utilize Program 2, Housing Rehabilitation Code Enforcement for these areas. 5R for the public participation, as I was mentioning, generally under Program 5 for removal constraints. Program 6 for accessory dwelling units. And then 9 for housing production streamlining and services, which is again, the removal of constraints to accelerate housing production. In West Taft, which is Program 10B, it does reference. In West Taft, which is Program Ten B, it does reference utilizing Program Four for rental assistance and tenant production programs, Program Seven for Fair Housing Services, Eight for homelessness prevention, and Nine for the Housing Production Streamlining incentives. So it, it, a lot of it kind of repeats over and over, kind of create that spider web effect of effort to capture the different housing types and potential production here in the city of Taft. So we've added those programs, Ten A and Ten B, that did not exist in the first draft. That was reviewed between September and December of last year. And then
Ten eleven twelve.
Ten eleven and, turn this the wrong way, Section Ten, eleven, and twelve are unchanged. So for the next steps, as I mentioned a minute ago, we did transmit this third draft to HCD for review as well, but the public, and they should have sixty days to review between May first and July first of this year. We anticipate a shorter review by HCD. And then should we get a letter in the shorter term that says we're good to go, because we are down to, down to about a dozen revisions, and I think we've addressed what they're looking for, a potential schedule timeline I put up there with the Planning Commission meeting scheduled on July second, followed by the City Council meetings on July fifteenth, or if we, we probably will provide a whole month of review for any follow-up questions or comments by anybody, and then set up the council meeting on August fifth for the final certification and then sending it up to HCD for their formal Approval of the certification of the Housing Element. And I will report back when I get that letter from them. On both ends of it, there's basically the one that says this draft is, shows the revisions are such that, that you could certify it. And then when we send up the formal copy, within thirty days, we get a letter back saying it is a certified copy of the Housing Element. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Alex, you covered it.
Hey, I think you've covered just about everything. Just keep doing a good job and moving it along.
So close.
Yeah, the closer you get, the more it's like, it's just out of reach. So I think you've done a great job with this, Mark, and I appreciate the, the effort that it takes to deal with a whole group of interested parties. It's not always the easiest thing to deal with when it comes to the Housing Element because there are a whole lot of people with a whole lot of different goals for the city. Amazingly, not a lot of them actually live here.
Weird.
So I think you've done as good a job as can be expected and just keep up the good work. We'll move on to Item Four, which means now you get to report on anything else you haven't had to do.
Well, as you know, I was actually at jury duty minutes before this meeting, so I usually come up with my report right before the meeting and what's going on. And the only thing I'll say is that we should have actionable items at our next two meetings outside of even the Housing Element. So hopefully for June and for July, we'll have some stuff to work on. And I'll leave my report at that because like nothing's popping in my head of, other than I'll go ahead and throw it out there, the car show, I'm sure somebody
May seventeenth.
I'll leave it to you, you guys to promote that out.
All right.
Yeah, but that was, last night we had a lot of proclamations at the City Council meeting, Lions Club, Building Safety Month, Corrections Week, I think there was, whatever they call it for, Police Officers Week.
And then someone got a promotion.
Oh, a promotion
The nursing staff.
And Nursing's Week, Nursing Week, and Big Give Kern Day, which was yesterday. That's my report.
Just as aside from that, I was sitting next to a couple of the police officers and they were questioning why they only get a week and the building officials get a month.
Talk to your association.
Yeah, I was going to say, you just need to have a better lobbyist.
Better lobbyist.
Okay, then we're on to City's Attorney Statements.
Thank you. No say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from our commissioners?
Scouts were also at the meeting and they said they had a great time, very informative. They had no idea. So yeah, it was nice to see some kids enthralled, so thank you.
The mayor made them publicly speak beyond our pledge.
Beautiful.
It was great.
Beautiful.
Yeah, he
Thank you.
He put them on the spot for a few things, including, do you guys know how to get rid of a used-up American flag?
Yeah.
And so I guess he's provided them with some stuff to do.
Perfect, yeah.
And they got a donation out of it, so.
Excellent, excellent. But thank you.
Yeah. You have anything?
Uh, yeah. Old Dorado's coming out with their calendar. You know, it's partial right now, but there is some stuff on the calendar that you could see at our website. And we're also going to be coming out with RV parking, like a drawing of the spots and pricing and all that. So we're not quite there yet, but reservations will be available soon. I know housing here gets crazy during Old Dorado, so the hotels get booked up quick and they're expensive, so RV parking's kind of an option.
Next option, yeah.
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 Outside that, thank you for all the work you've done on this Housing Element. It's, I know it's a lot, it's taken a long time.
Okay, well, I have no further comments than what we've already said, so let's move on to Item Seven, Again, invocation of a representative to the City Council. I promise I'll actually be here in town this time.
I'd like to nominate you then.
Thank you. I'll take the nomination and we'll move on to a motion for adjournment.
Motion?
Second.
Deal.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.